I don't want to do that. I really don't want to do that. But I've got.
Okay, we're called to order. We, excuse me, gentlemen, we're calling the meeting to order at 7:21. It's October 26, 2021. This is a special call meeting of the Gallatin City Council. The purpose of this meeting is consideration of Resolution R2110-73, the temporary adjusting certain pay rates of pay. And so with that, we are called to order. I'm asking Ms. Kittle to call the official role, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Fan.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes is absent. Councilwoman Love.
Here, and I need to disclose that my son's a fireman.
And Councilman Overton.
Hmm.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Kittle, and I wanted to let you know that Mr. Hayes did contact me today. He is ill and wishes he could be here but could not, so.
Hope he gets better.
Absolutely.
Yes, we all do.
With that, we'll move on to public recognition on agenda-related item, item only. That means anyone that's here from the public that would like to speak on the item that we are considering in this special call meeting may do so. We ask that you come to the podium. You'll have five minutes to speak. We ask that you introduce yourself and give us your address as well. And public recognition on the agenda-related item is now open.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Brown. Good evening, Council. My name is Michelle Juvance, 1335 Long Halle Pike. I wasn't going to say anything, but I was just listening to all of the discussion. I agree, we definitely need to give especially our firefighters a raise, and that's something that I've talked to you before about. I think it's shameful that our firefighters are making $12 an hour. It's just not right. I just wanted to offer a solution because I'm a longtime small business owner. I've had employees for many years. Since the year 2000, so that's a couple decades that I've had employees. And one thing that might be a solution is as a temporary stopgap, instead of actually giving a raise, that would be based on the amount of money that they're making, like why not just give a bonus every month to each employee that's on the list that we're talking about? All of the critical infrastructure employees, give them exactly the same amount to each one each month. Like, for example, that's what I did with my employees when I had a retail store. We had, for us, it was based on sales volume. If every, no, it wasn't, no one got paid by the sales that they made. Everybody got exactly the same bonus every month if the company met the sales goals. So then every single person got the same check every month, and we always met our sales goals, even when it was something that we thought, wow, there's no way we're going to hit that. We did, because everybody worked together, because everybody was going to get the same exact amount every single month, and they wanted that extra money. So why not, you know, so we're saying like $12 an hour is like completely not acceptable. Councilman Alexander, you're saying we need to have at least a minimum of 15, so that's a $3 difference. So why, you know, $3 an hour, when you go with a month, that's almost $500 a month. So for this short amount of time, an example of a solution would be for each one of these employees, no matter if they're making $12 an hour, $15 an hour, or whatever they're actually making now, give them an extra $500 a month or $600 a month, like whatever the amount is that would be a smart amount to give them. Everybody gets that same dollar amount, so you're not worrying about like, oh, that person's a step two, but they're making 60 grand, and this person's a step two and they're only making 30 grand a year. Everybody's just going to get that same $600 a month extra, which will mean a lot more to the really lower-wage people, but it won't, it won't like be such a hard fiscal impact for the city to like have to swallow right now until we get the pay scale and figure out what to do on the long term. Anyway, I just wanted to offer that as an idea. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Pascal Jovens, 1335 Long Halle Pike. Couple of things, after hearing maybe all of you great, great comments all night. I kind of agree with Councilman Alexander that we should not discriminate about department. I think everybody, every department should get a raise. I looked at the paper, I got the list of all the employees, department salaries, and, you know, tonight who said that the Park and Recs got a greater word, so they're good enough to get an award, but nobody at Park and Recs is good enough to get a raise. So we should not discriminate about a department. Everybody should get a raise. It's not new. I think it's now we're on crisis mode, but that, that was coming. We've been talking about that for years, and especially fire. I talked about fire for a couple of years now, and police. What's interesting is that right now, we gave another pilot agreement to the gap so they don't pay too much taxes, and employee at the gap made more money than city employees. So, you know, I think we need to rethink the way we run taxes with companies so we can afford to pay correctly our employees. Mayor, you made a comment about the pay scale, saying that you think the high-level employee where the market is actually got the salary of Andersonville and Nashville. And when I look at the police chief, sorry, chief, police chief in Andersonville and police chief here are the same starting level. Police chief in Andersonville make more money than here. And every fire and police in Andersonville make an average of $7,000 more a year than what we pay our guys without counting. Hopefully, you guys, you can, you can research that, but I got the list of what, you know, just for Nashville, the benefits for Metro Nashville PD. The list is two-page long, and it's pretty impressive. If I didn't have a job, I would probably think about it. Andersonville, same thing. The benefits are three-page long, including staff that we don't see at our level. Nashville, they have an $800 bonus every month for every police officer. Andersonville, you know, they have life insurance, they have tuition reimbursement, they have longevity bonus. We have, but $90 each year. They have bonus for their level of education. If they have a master, they have a bonus. If they speak Spanish, they have a bonus. I think we're not, we're really not competitive, and I stopped at, you know, police and fire because I can't spend all my time looking at every, every other department. I think we really need to do something, and I appreciate you guys looking into that, but we need to do something now. You're telling us that the city is solid, so we need to spend the money and keep these guys happy so they don't go somewhere else. And I agree with Councilman Fennell. You know, what, what costs the most in an employee is the training. In my profession, training costs $150,000 a year, and that's why they keep us happy, because, you know, if we're losing 20 people every year, look at the amount of money. So I agree with you, we need to do something and keep our guys happy, and I think we need to give, you know, police, fire a raise. You're right there. I'm here, too. So. Thank you for your time, and hopefully you make the right call, and we can keep our people happy.
Anyone else that wishes to speak this evening? Welcome you to do so at this time. Saying no one further indicating that they wish to speak, I'll declare public recognition on the agenda item closed, moving us on to our agenda item, which is Resolution R2110-73. Here we are.
You know, it's.
Haven't discussed it.
It's, it's interesting how cities and counties do things differently than we do, and there's so many things out there. But there again, too, I'd like to say at least we're on the right path, and yes, I agree with everybody in here that we need to look at every position out there, but right now, I think we're in emergency mode, and I do agree with what the mayor said, and I want to go by also what the department heads kind of what we're told agree with today. I'm going to throw out there that we make a motion just to adapt a step four process and get the thing going.
A four-step increase?
Increase, I'm sorry. Yeah, to get things going right there, but I do want the rest of the employees in the city to know that this is a, this is something that weighs heavily on all of our conscience, and we're not going to stop there. We're going to move on and try to adjust and try to make our city a lot more enticing and more competitive. But with that, I would like to make a motion that we adapt a step four increase.
I'd like a quick kick in the can down the road and second that.
Four. Let's say three.
No, you said four, but for the critical infrastructure departments identified.
Started.
I'm sorry. Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second by Councilman Fan, opening the floor for discussion.
Mayor, that also includes all the, this list of how many is on here in every department that will match this, correct?
I, I think it's only going to be if the, the job is the same and the description is the same and it falls within the class. I think it's just going to be the mechanics.
I understand. There's not very many of them, but.
Yeah, and, and if there's something else we bump up against that we were unaware, we can certainly bring it back to the council.
But I just want to be sure we're including all departments with these folks.
Yeah, well, you may want to make an amendment to that end, just to say, and if there are any, you know, absolute equivalence in other departments, meaning that if they have the same job classification and, and everything, then they would be compensated the same way, because it doesn't make sense. I'll use the mechanics as an example, because that was one that was brought to me that really does make sense, because they could leave the Parks Department and go to Public Works, so you wouldn't want to see that happen, but I think that's the only area where we're going to have that happen.
Right, okay.
Ms. Nichols, did you have something?
I think it's more than that, but.
I don't.
There's also inmate crew leader. It's across departments, and then.
Custodians.
Not custodians.
Okay.
Parks and Rec does not have a custodian. They have a something technician. I forget what it's called.
At a much higher rate than a custodian.
Yeah, they're at higher grades than the custodians. There is one position called an information system specialist one that's in IT and police. I don't know if that was, I can't remember if that was on that list or not for the police department, but that's the only three. Mechanic one, mechanic two, inmate crew leader, and then that IT position.
I know that Public Works don't actually have any inmate crew leaders at this point because we've been unsuccessful in hiring them.
Well, I'll make amendment to that, that we include those positions as well that matches these.
I'm just looking at the resolution as it's, as it's written, and I want to make sure that I understand exactly what we're doing, because right now it says, "In an effort to lessen the turnover rate and increase recruitment for open positions of certain critical infrastructure jobs, hourly rates will be temporarily adjusted for the following job codes through the fiscal year," and that temporary increase will be the four-step increase. Is that correct?
That's been, that was the motion.
Okay, so we will add that to this resolution.
For these jobs specifically, because they don't go all the way up in the departments. And then Mr. Overton has made a motion on an amendment, so we entertain a second on that amendment.
Have we set a date for temporarys until the pay plan comes out?
Until.
Right now, it says through this fiscal year is what the resolution says.
Can we change, well, I'm going to, after we deal with this amendment, then I think we should say the end of the fiscal year or implementation of new pay structure is what I would suggest, because if we can get that pay study back sooner and we do implement it before the end of the fiscal year, we don't want, that would be a conflict. So anyway, but we're still.
Back to the other amendment.
Yeah, we're still on Mr. Overton's amendment.
I second his amendment.
We have a second on the amendment from Councilman Alexander, opening the floor for discussion on the amendment.
How many positions was it, Councilman Overton?
Maybe six, seven.
Maybe six, it's not many.
Six.
Close to it.
Thinking, two mechanics, inmate crew leader, the IT position, there may be only four or five.
It's not many, but it's fair across the board, every department.
We're sure we're not leaving anyone out.
Well, if we find that we are in some way, we can come back and address it.
Okay.
When, when is the appropriate time to make it go?
Let's, let's vote on the amendment.
Okay, sorry. Good point, thank you.
Vote on amendment.
We have a motion, a second on the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment?
So this don't cover any other department except for the people you have on this list?
Well, we're voting on the amendment, and that is related to some other departments with equivalent positions.
Okay, but it has to be pertaining to this sort of work, I mean.
Right, it's these jobs. It's these jobs. Any other discussion on the amendment? Count on favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
I'm going to abstain because of my relationship to a fireman.
So I have five in favor, one abstention, and one absent, so it does pass. That takes us back to the two discussion points related to the original motion, one of which, when this could go into effect. Ms. Nichols, do you have guidance on when that makes sense from a payroll perspective? I would really defer to how you can make it work.
It says right now in the resolution, from and after final passage of this resolution.
Cannot get it on Friday's check. That's not feasible. The next payroll is in two weeks. It will be a short week because of Veterans Day falling in there.
Could you do it starting this pay period that we're in?
For the next check, yes, but there's no way we can get it on Friday's check.
Yeah, well, but that would actually move it back to, so going into effect, when does it happen, on Sundays?
Yes.
So it would be Sunday, whatever the date was then, 25th, 24th?
Start of the pay period was two days ago.
I mean, wouldn't it be easier to change it across the board for a payroll rather than it go into effect on a Thursday or something?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking. So I think that your appropriate effective date would be October 24th.
Or the pay period beginning.
Pay period beginning October 24th.
Do you add that into the motion?
I would need an amendment.
Make amendment that it started on October the 20th.
Pay period beginning October 24th.
Pay period beginning October 24th.
Second. A motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman George, opening the floor for discussion on that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
Abstain.
Five in favor, one abstention, one absent. It does pass, back again to the regular motion. Yes, Councilman Overton.
Mayor, I just want to be sure everybody understands how committed we are to all employees and not just this handful that's on this list, but I think this is a hard decision we're doing tonight. It's, it's a necessary decision, but I think everybody on this council, from the mayor on down, is really committed to get our pay scale back where it needs to be, and I think between now and June or March or whenever we get the pay stated back, I think you'll see that we're all committed to do that.
I agree with Councilman Overton, and I really want to pursue this heavily.
Yeah, and this hazard pay supplement, I mean, as soon as it comes from the state, we're going to turn it around to the employee, providing you pass it on second reading, we'll pass that on to employees, and I think that will be.
So this is not coming out of general treasury?
This is, yes. This is, this is, well, this is coming out of budgeted funds. I think every department will have the existing budget to cover it, because we have some of the openings.
Has the pay study begun?
We have hired the person, we've done a lot of the groundwork. I don't know that they have moved along too far.
Need to make sure that we are staying on topic also.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But that, that does bring me back to what I think would be another appropriate amendment to this, would be that this stays in effect through the end of the fiscal year or the implementation of a new pay schedule, whichever happens first.
Do we have any statistics on what other police and fire departments, how many employees they're losing?
Oh, yeah, I mean, they're all out there. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, I'm sure we can, I've seen statistics specific to different departments, but no, we have not done a.
Compare what we're losing versus.
I, I think we'd probably find ourselves to be quite consistent. And there was a pay study done for public safety, as you'll recall, that we, you know, did with this year's budget, and I think you'll recall that, you know, at the police department, we were, we were fairly middle of the market, but we were having some compression issues with some of our supervisors, so that we had police officers that weren't wanting to progress through the ranks. And then in our fire department, it was shown that some of the, you know, the middle and higher people, that we were, you know, solidly in the middle of the market, it was our lowest-range people that were being undercompensated, and that was why we did the 2.5% COLA this year, because they said that would get us back in the middle of the market, but it's been such a crazy time with, with departments and the county and cities everywhere just throwing money. And I know that when we did our pay study, they did, I mean, we're, we're never going to pay what Metro does. I mean, we're not going to pay for, our citizens aren't going to be paying $4.50 in property taxes either, but interestingly, since Hendersonville was mentioned, I remember that the public safety pay study showed that Hendersonville was very far out of the market on the high side for their fire department, but very far out of the market on the low side for their police department. So that, and I tell you that this because I really think that we need to have an appreciation for doing it through a comprehensive pay study that compares all of our departments against the market, are competing, are, I'm not, competing for the purposes of employees, other municipalities and, and county entities that may be hiring the similar positions, but also against the private sector. So I, we don't just arbitrarily go out there and say, you know, Chief Bandit doesn't come up here and say, I have to have 10% more for all of our police officers, and we just nod and say yes. We'd be like, whoa, we'd have to figure this out, because we can't just, but we're doing this because we're able to do the hazard pay supplement for all of our employees, and we are in a critical situation with our critical infrastructure essential to our citizens' health and safety.
Mayor, I'd like to make amendment that we keep this in effect until the end of our fiscal year or until the pay status completed.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Fennell, opening the floor for any discussion on it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
Abstain.
Love has abstained, five in favor, one absent. It does pass, back on the original motion with three amendments.
Believe we beat it up pretty good.
Any further questions, any further discussion? We know there's potholes, we know that it's not perfect, but it is critical that we get some of these positions filled for the existing employees in that department and also for our, our citizens. And I do want to make this point before you vote. Our police department is doing an amazing job of covering the city. No one is in jeopardy because our police department is understaffed at this point. Our fire department, they are short-staffed, but they are taking care of our citizens. They are making every single medical call, and there's no one in jeopardy because we're short-staffed, but they're all working themselves so hard to keep up with. Well, I'm, yeah, exactly, and, and even, you know, our Public Works, they're, they're taking care of the streets, they're taking care of the trash. They're short, so I mean, it's, it's just, this is about the existing employees as much as it is about, you know, trying to attract new ones. And I'm sure I've said something that someone's going to find offensive, but I'm, I'm, I'm trying to communicate well, and I'm sometimes better, I'm, I'm better at other times than
Well, we're, we're all trying very hard.
I got talked out yesterday. That's what I'm going to claim as the excuse.
Last spoke to Chief Bandit in the hallway, and he did say it would be okay if the council would approve it to move his office into the entrance of the city hall.
And that's not on topic? So we're back on the original motion, last chance to discuss. Okay, all in.
This is all for all the emergency pertaining to that.
It's the critical infrastructure. It's Public Works, Public Utilities, Police and Fire, and it's those positions that are listed that will be advanced four steps either until we implement the new pay scale, which will hopefully be before the end of the fiscal year or at the end of the fiscal year.
And with the amendment, it does apply to a few other departments that have these same job descriptions.
Because, again, it wouldn't make sense for us to do it, and why would they not leave that department and come to another department and do the exact same job? Does that make sense? Can, understand?
I understand.
Okay.
I still, I mean, I still feel the same, but, you know, I understand. I want everybody to have it, I do, but I'm still concerned about the ones that's cleaning the toilets, the ones that's cutting the grass or whatever. Go ahead. I've expressed how I felt about it and.
I, I think we're addressing those employees. I mean, I really do. So this is Resolution R2110-73, amended to go into effect on the first day of the current pay period, amended to stay in effect until the new pay schedule is implemented or the next fiscal year begins, and to apply to these same jobs in other departments where they might exist. Anything I've misstated or described wrongly?
Not at all.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
Abstain.
We have Ms. Love abstained, five in favor, none opposed, and one absent, so. So Resolution R-2110-73 does pass. And with that, we've concluded our agenda.
Mr. Jordan.
I have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Fennell. Thank you all. Thank you for being here. Thank you for caring. Have a good evening. Be kind. Good night.